Okay, we're ready to start. Public hearing on RGFA for a new cabana at 29 Mile Standish Road. And who is making the presentation on that?
My name's Paul Muldoon, I'm from Massillon, Burbidge, Nevada, Mass.
All right, and we've given this one about forty minutes of presentation, so if you could try to hold your presentation to fifteen minutes or so, then that would give us a chance to ask comments, get our feedback from our consultants and members of the audience.
Sounds great.
So, just before we start, my name is Al Igolat, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and the other board members are...
Tony Flynn.
Really trouble that.
Sue Zacharice.
Okay, go ahead.
Again, my name's Paul Muldoon, I'm from Massillon, Burbidge. I'm here with Leonard Elizabeth Browdes from 29 Mile Standish Road. We're here to have approval for an RGFA application for our proposed cabana. The existing lot size is sixty thousand square feet and change, and we're looking to add one hundred and eighty-five square feet to our overall RGFA of five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine point two-five, totaling six thousand one hundred eighty-four point two-five square feet.
When was the house built?
Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. The percentages are going from nine point nine-six to ten point two-six percent. The property here, you can see, this is Route 117, and we've got the Dairy Joy down here, Kings Grant Road over to Mile Standish, and the property is here. A little bit of a zoom in, you can see the Mile Standish Road here, we've got the looped driveway and the main structure here. This is a tax map showing similar items in 117, Kings Grant Road, Mile Standish. Our site plan here is running north-south across the page, so north being on the left-hand side, and we've got Mile Standish Road along the bottom, our curved driveway here, and the main house sits here with a three-car garage on the side here. You can see our sixty-foot front yard setback and our forty-five-foot lot setback around the rest of the property. We have an existing pool off the back of the house, and notice our footprint of the cabana within the envelope, not going over the side yard setback, or the forty-five-foot setback. Our septic system is down to the south, and we can move on. Our footprint here, the vast majority of the structure is open-air, so we've got a series of columns here that are holding up a roofed structure, open structure from the underside, so we'll have, you know, a cathedral ceiling, exposed framing. And then we have a small section here, one hundred and eighty-five square feet of kitchenette, just here, a small changing area, a small bathroom. And then from the outside, we have a storage space for pool equipment, cleaning equipment, that type of thing. So the overall square foot dimension of the open-air structure is about five hundred fifty-five square feet, and we've got, again, one hundred and eighty-five square feet here. We do have an outdoor shower off the backside of the structure as well. Proximity to the main house, you can see the back, and we've got a covered porch with a porch above off the back of the house here, and this is the expanse of the main portion of the building. So the rendered images here, we'll go back to the architectural view in a moment, but you can see here, if you're sitting in the pool looking back at the cabana, this is the elevation that you'll see. And we've got the gable end here with some interesting woodworking, and it's very much open-air posting in the corners. We will have a drop-down screen system for insects, keep those buggers out. And then from the house side, you're seeing this, again, we've got screen doors in certain locations where we don't want the drop-down screens for access. But we've got hip roof towards the house, we've got the little storage unit here, window into the small bathroom, a side view of our shower. The backside of the building, which might be the only side of the building that you might have a glimpse from the street, we've got a couple of gable ends, the exposure of the shower here, and you can notice that the shower has a covering of the small pergola. And this is the upgradiant side, again, open. We're going for a very natural color. The house colors are a light tan or brownish color. We want to use those colors, the natural and neutral colors, light browns and tans, along with matching the existing roof shingle of the house on this structure. Back to the architectural view, we get a little bit more sense of the vertical boarding that's happening on the enclosed portion. This rear elevation here, we've got this horizontal, almost fence-like, structure to give it some privacy on that side. And the vertical board, again, happens on the storage unit and around the edge. The height of the building, if you can see our section up here, from grade to the underside of the beam is just under seven and a half feet. So it's not looming, it's not really a tall structure. We're trying to keep to a human scale. And you can see we've got an interesting open truss system from the inside. The landscape plan that you see here is ninety-five percent installed current. It's something that's been installed recently. You can see that we've got some existing screening here that's doing a lot of the work to hide this backside where we've got the shower here and the enclosed portion there. And then a number of different plantings of various sizes, various maturity, that are really adorning the site quite well. Upon the site visit, we did notice that one section, if you come down here, we'll see in pictures later on, that there was one section between this spruce and this maple tree about the width of the driveway. And my assumption is that during the construction of the house or the pool, this was an access route. And I felt that, through discussions on the site, filling in this area with some landscaping would go a long way to add screening from the street and really make it difficult to see the structure at all. We've got a couple of Norway spruce in here, we've got some viburnum, arrowwood, precipia, and some decorative grasses. From the southern side, the site plan isn't showing it here, but the front part of the property is very well landscaped as well. And we took a walk in the site visit to this corner and looked back and just to get a sense of what you might be able to see. And it's not much, the grade of the front yard does raise quite a bit, and there's a number of trees and shrubs throughout the front part of the property and the intermediate part of the property along here. It really does a pretty good job of blocking the view among the pool and the proposed structure. The stormwater management plan completed by Peter Gammy at Columbia Design Group. It includes a round of perforated pipe along with the eastern edge of the pool and along the drip edges of the backside of the cabana. It's a twelve-inch-wide, eighteen-inch-deep trench, crushed stone and a forged perforated pipe. Those pipes are then connected to a double infiltration system off the backside of the structure.
Does the main house and driveway have the stormwater?
Yes. You can see in our site plan here, there's a couple of pretty substantial trench trains on the other side of the front of the property, along with some other areas of infiltration. Our lighting plan here, maybe we can go to the schedule first. The existing lighting plan of the house, the existing house itself has about twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty lumens. And then you add the pool on top of that, about fifteen thousand lumens. So we're somewhere in the neighborhood of just under forty thousand lumens as they stand today. Our proposed lighting would only happen in two drop-down chandelier-type fixtures in these two locations, being the outdoor space. Those are the ones that would count against us. And the height of that fixture would be above the lowest point of our beam. So the lumens of our proposed lighting are fourteen, forty-eight hundred lumens, and we're proposing to remove a number of spotlights that are on the house, four spotlights and two wall sponges, reducing the number of existing lumens by ten thousand nine hundred and fifty. Total lumen count would be thirty-three thousand six hundred, or an improvement from our current situation of six thousand one hundred and fifty.
Did you say just the pool is eighteen thousand?
Yes.
The pool itself?
The pool itself. Based on the wattage of the fixture. And just to walk through some site images here, this is looking at the existing screening here that's maturing, and the existing pool is here, so we're standing on the north looking back at the house. And we've got our screen porch here, the main part of the house starts here. We've got a little grill area and, again, the pool beyond. The pool here has an existing patio of about three hundred and ten square feet. We're building right on top of that, so our new impervious, our additional impervious area is about six hundred and ten square feet as calculated by Peter Gammy from Columbia Design Group.
When was the pool installed?
That's your...
So, and you can see in the distance, this is looking down towards the southern corner of the property. We do have some screenings and some vegetation and some fencing.
Vegetable.
Vegetable garden, thank you, on the southern end. Look at the back of the grill and the pool. This is looking back towards the street here. You can see a little bit of the paving and that one area of note right on the street at Mile Standish. This is looking from the southern tip of the property, looking back at the main house. And we can see the fence that runs through here, and the pool is up and around that corner. And this is the northern tip, standing between the existing trees, looking past the pool fence, looking past our existing screening, and getting to where the pool area is. So this area will be planted based on...
Okay, is that the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sue, you went out on the site walk.
Yes.
Can you tell us to start us off?
Right, it's a very, very nice plan, the cabana. It's not overdone, it's not big, and everything about it really will fit in well. And honestly, you can't see it, I swear, people driving by are lost. And everyone notices back there. The only thing, and I somehow didn't ask about the total lumens, and that's a real problem, because when we do our approvals, we do total lumenage for the entire program, not just the house. So that's the only issue that I see, is the amount of light coming out of that pool.
Well, given the amount of light coming out of the pool, the other question is, it looked like most of deciduous trees were butters, and obviously it's going to be beefed up with the landscaping plant. But to what extent is there existing planting?
Well, they have a lot of planting. It's really well screened.
Too much.
No, it's...
In the winter as well.
Yeah, yeah, no, and the lay of the lot, and it's up a little bit, and you kind of don't see that there. You know, I don't, this wouldn't impact any neighbor that I can make up. But the lights, there's a lot of light coming out of that property, especially out of that pool.
Well, we had talked about a lot of the lights in the yard. It's funny, I don't, the light in the pool doesn't seem that bright to me, but I'm very sensitive to aggravating the neighbors, because there is a neighbor's light, and I always see what...
Yeah, that aggravates me, too, right.
Yes, it aggravates me.
Exactly, I get it.
So there are a lot of these, we had talked about sconces and floodlights that we would remove, and we don't even use.
Right.
So we want to...
Right, yeah, the lights were coming down, we knew that. I think that was...
And even some of the sconces.
Yeah.
We've got to get it below twenty-two thousand.
We've got to get it below twenty-two thousand?
Yeah.
That's our standard.
Yeah, that's our standard for the entire lot.
And all the lights have to be dark sky compliant as well.
And see, the trouble with the pool lights...
Including the existing ones.
Is they are not, they sort of are reflected beaming up into the universe as opposed to shielded, which is what we like to keep our lumens down. But I don't think it's an impossible problem to...
No.
Probably changing the lights in the pool. I mean, we see pools all the time, and they're... No one, nobody does them. I mean, it's possible to tell perfectly well why the pool, with lights that don't...
You were just sitting here for the previous applicant, highlighting us. It's like, no lights in the pool! We're all shocked.
That's a liability, lawyer me.
And it's like, okay, right, so maybe fifty lumens will be just fine, and that's all done either. So that's the only issue that I see.
But don't all the lights have to be compliant?
Yeah, the exposed exterior fixtures are going to be...
Throughout, including the existing.
Yeah.
Because we really have to look at this now as if it were coming to us for the first time, getting ready to be built.
Yeah.
Which, I hate to bring it up, but what about the circular driveway?
Yeah.
It came with the house when we bought.
No, I know, but if that house had come before us and it was over six thousand square feet, because it probably should have.
Wouldn't have been a circular driveway.
It wouldn't have been a circular driveway, and we have had them removed.
Right, but we had them removed for, I'm thinking of the one glaring example, is because that was a straight-up slope, it was brand-new, it just glared down on everybody. This is really... It's very well planted, the house is very well landscaped. So I wouldn't have an objection to the circular driveway. But you're correct about the lights, that they would have to be dark sky compliant, unless they're up under a soffit or something like that, so they should.
Kim, anything on landscaping?
No.
You're all set with it?
Exactly what Sue said.
Okay, and Dave, stormwater management?
It's fine, we asked, like, the janitor, I need to come tonight. Like, it's so minor, it's fine.
Yeah, okay. One issue is that the corner of the cabana is right on the setback line. It is on it, it's not off it, but it is on it.
So we'd want very precise shooting, yeah, on a survey.
We'd want to have a surveyor shoot that to within, you know...
Before, after, and during?
Yeah, to within an inch.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, you say absolutely, but, you know, sometimes surveyors... Honestly, you tell them exactly how precise you want that shot, you know, they tend to get a little squishy, so...
Working with Stone and Hamilton seem to be a very on-top-pit, precise group, and we'll be sure that that happens. We want to cite this exactly where we want it, and being compliant is part of where we want it.
Well, if you're over, you're...
It'll be...
It's a violation of the zoning law. So it's, people usually tend to be a little shy at the setback line just to be on the safe side. Because not only would we want the corner, that corner, actually, there are two, but that one is the one that's right on it, but the setback line itself to be pretty accurately, very accurately delineated. Yeah, it's going to have to be probably certified. Any other comments?
Just one question, as you look at the house, the house to the left looks to be a little bit tight, and we talked about the buffering from that house to their view of the cabana. Do you have a picture of it, by any chance?
I'm going to go back to the...
Yes.
This?
Yes, exactly, exactly. What's their view from the backyard of the cabana? Do you have a picture of that?
I don't, more or less, because I couldn't see it.
Couldn't see it.
This is a bit of mountain, yeah.
Well, I'm more concerned about they're in their backyard, and what do they see in the cabana? Not do you see their house, but when they're in their backyard.
We can look through our bushes and see what's going on. And so I have questions about whether the screening that's there is really adequate.
Yes, right.
So could you show us the picture of the screening in the north again, please?
See the... In here?
Yeah, the house is right beyond the pitch and the pitchback screen there.
Yeah, but it's their backyard that would concern me, yeah. From their backyard, can they see the cabana? Or how much of the cabana can they see?
If we were to take down all of our trees, we could see the whole cabana.
It's a clear question. I did not stand in his backyard to look down. It seemed like it's a very thick growth in between properties on all sides of the back of 29 miles.
Looks like the builder cut all the way to the edge of the lot. I think that's all ours.
Here?
Yeah.
Could you just go back a couple of slides to the site plan that shows the planning?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's it.
Yeah.
So it gets sort of over where the impact is.
Right.
Is blank, so it's hard to know what's actually there.
Yeah.
You know, where does the lawn stock over there on this piece of property? It's hard to tell from a picture, you know, what's on the other guy's property and what's on this property.
Yeah, I'm looking to aim the camera a little bit right from this picture.
Yeah.
Well, to the right of the pitch.
Yeah, exactly.
That's no grass, that's wood chips and the trees that are planted back there.
Yeah.
By the way, the picture, we're looking over the top of Ramon and sort of looking back this way, so we're missing...
That piece right up there.
That piece in the picture.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So if you can just be sensitive to that near landscape, why don't you? Kim, is that something you've already considered?
So all that's there has been planted already.
Yeah.
No, no, but it's a blank area.
Yeah, it's swamped.
What we're talking about, and we don't know what's there at all. Something is there, presumably. We just don't know what it is. Or, you know, how close it is to the property line. The question is how much of the screening belongs to the neighbor?
Yeah.
All right, well, now we're on Google Earth, perhaps we can test it.
So what do you think about beefing up that buffer a little bit to the second neighbor? Would that be necessary? Would that be worth consideration?
It's worth consideration.
Okay.
Depending on what type of landscaping we'd want to do there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of landscaping, I mean, as much as we don't want, the neighbors don't want to see us, we don't want to see them.
Right, right.
So...
Yeah, it's a new structure, just as much as possible, I'd like to see the new structure, but from their view, from their backyard.
Yeah, we want to consider and address that.
Sure.
There were no screening issues before the builder stole the yard.
Yeah.
Well, I can't help but, since then, I think you've seen that we've put a tremendous amount of...
It's pretty fine to do.
What is it?
I thought it was a long button.
The last thing?
Yeah. Show us a picture of what they've put in.
So there's a lot of new plantings up along the sedge, and that runs back and around, again, just off the picture here.
It looks from the satellite view on Google Maps, the screening is all on the other guy's property in that location. It's a, it is sort of a blank area.
So they can add more, I mean, more retreats along that property line?
Yeah, that won't be an issue. I think the prior builder probably did, we didn't buy this house, we bought this house after it was built, we weren't involved with developing it.
Yeah.
But the builder probably did take that lot, because I didn't see it prior to that. But I would say the plantings are insignificant.
Yeah, what's a place?
And I would say about at least fifty to seventy different landlives.
Which are the tunes of thousands of dollars to try and get.
We just can't replace the huge trees that are making this up.
Okay.
If the plantings don't look very large right now, how big will they grow?
Yeah, well, each one's a different species, so we can go through and...
Answer my question.
Wait a minute, don't talk to each other. If you have a question, ask the board, and we'll ask the applicant.
Please ask him how big the plantings are going to grow.
How big, which plantings, by the way?
The ones to the north.
The ones that have recently been planted?
Yes.
There's, what size are they now?
Those are the ones on that planet you showed us?
They're varied. There's some...
What's the average size, would you guess? I mean, he's looking it up, but...
Probably average between six and ten feet.
Six and ten feet. And these are, what kind of, what species, I mean, evergreens?
It's a next.
All right, and he wants to know how high they're going to grow eventually.
I don't remember what species are, but I think there were some, you know, ornamental trees and some evergreen trees and some shrubs.
You got any Norway spruce? We can give an estimate of how big that is.
I don't have the specifications of the planted items.
But again, that's all in the back, that back.
Not that.
That's...
Run with the color of that one.
Which...
Doesn't that say right there?
Through the review process, you did have a schedule here. Because they're previously planted, we want to take the schedule off.
Well... Because it's all existing.
All existing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but are they labeled?
Not the sizes, just the species, well, not even the species.
Even the species would help, what are they?
It looks like there's some arborvitae.
There's multiple evergreens, there's a tiger eye spruce, there are a few spruces, there are maples.
What are the penguins?
I think those are cherry blossoms.
Those probably are ornaments.
Okay, and the gray ones are what?
Gray.
Which are gray.
Well, the...
Darker.
The darker ones are evergreens. That's a mix of like pine spruce and arborvitae.
Okay, so the pine and spruce will get pretty healthy. Yeah. And the pale green ones?
Okay, you have red maples, they get what, seventy-five to a hundred feet tall? Cornus cusae, they'll get a good thirty-five to forty-five in maturity, and spread as big as that. Magnolias won't get that big.
I wish I had.
Lost it now.
What are the pale green ones, do we know?
What else, what does it say? Does that say...
I think those...
Cadaver, yeah.
Okay, so can you read off someone else?
Those look like pine woods, but I...
ABs, okay, that's a spruce.
So somewhere between, depending on the species, twenty feet and seventy-five feet.
Wow, interesting, they have a Don Redwood, that's a, excuse me, that's a cool tree to have, three of those. But they are a deciduous conifer, interesting. But you've got a bunch of Norway spruce... But you've got a bunch of Norway spruces and Serbian spruces and the green giant arborvitae, which are really a nice tree. And, boy, how big do they get? They can get.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, yeah. And then the Norways can get a hundred.
Yeah.
I mean, they're just, so, they do get very large. And these were not that small when they were put in, they were ten to twelve, eight to ten.
It's a good plant.
Yeah, it is. It's very varied.
But yes, there's that gap right there. Going out to the site, I couldn't see the neighbor, but I, there's no property stakes there, so I can tell with.
So he said, what happens if he cuts down the buffer, that he's opening up?
Isn't there a life shared responsibility for both of them?
Well, these people actually have a very good buffer. You know, I understand that it's, there's a big house there now.
It's over there.
Right over here.
Right over there. That's the, that's the question.
Is that the spot, I mean, I can't remember what was even there.
So what I would suggest is suggesting some additional planting in that area between the screen, that, that line of screening and the pool house right in that area, to help with the buffer if it ever happens that it's reduced on the other side of the property line. And then just submit that as a, as an addendum to this, to the application. The lighting, just resubmit on the, you know, sort of switching out the light fixture, the pool light fixtures, so that lower the lumen count, and then make sure that all the fixtures that are going to be on the house are dark sky compliant. And I think those are the only things we talked about, weren't they? So if you do that, oh, and the, oh, and the surveyor for the property line in the corner, that's going to be a condition, that that's, that that's going to happen. If you submit that before we look at the decision, we can take a look at that while we're reviewing the decision, and you don't have to come back and make a separate presentation.
When do you look at the decision?
Well, that's what we're going to get to. When do we look at the decision? November eighteenth?
You have a question, then, question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, not to.
Our the goats, thirty miles, Standis Road.
Yes.
I have no objection to the cabana, no, the curved driveway, and we're right across the street, and you can't miss anything. And I don't think we'll even see that cabana.
All right. Thank you. When are we going to look at the decision, John, well, it's got on the calendar?
Yeah, the second is the first date that has any open.
Okay.
December second.
December second. So we'll, it's just, we just have a stack of things we've got to look at, and our agenda just fills up. Yes?
Why is there no screening due north of the cabana?
Due north of the cabana? We just said, we're going to add that. They're going to submit a, a, a landscaping plan.
I understand, but why is it not there already?
It's the dark pen.
I don't know why it's not there already. We're asking them to put something there.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll, it's got to be the second, and what time, John?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen? You'll look at it, and there's no reason for you to come, I mean, we'll, we'll just be reviewing the draft decision. We won't be discussing anything that we haven't already talked about, so it's, it's really a technical thing. However, I would advise you to get the revisions in, the lighting issues and landscaping a week in advance.
Absolutely.
So we'll have a chance to sign off on it.
Including replacing all the light fixtures on the house.
If they're not dark sky compliant already.
Or not up into the soffit.
Yeah, if they're covered with roof.
Right.
Yes, that's all.
That's all right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Would it be possible for me to grab a couple shots coming this way just to back up?
Yes.
Perfect.
How are you?
Fine, too. One of the things that I was talking about is the requirement is when you're very stable, when you're, when you're, when you're on the soffit, you're going to be, which is.
Oh, yes. I saw those.
Yeah, I think we've got friends.
I would probably. You would be a board on it or.
I don't know. I think we're here.
We've still got one.